Eight o'clock from the following quarter. Roll call, uh, everybody except Brett is here. She will not be coming in this meeting. And we have the agenda, we have, uh, four additions to the agenda. Numbers eight, nine, ten, eleven, personnel. Anything else?
Nope.
Those additions, I would continue.
So.
Second. Motion. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Uh, we want to approve and correct the minutes from the June twelfth, two thousand twelve board meeting.
I like the one filled with the minutes.
But David to approve and second from Deb. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Onto the financial reports. We've got the May two thousand twelve treasury report and month to balance.
If I can draw your attention to the PMA sheet, we've got some red items in there. I'll run them through briefly. Uh, the first page, there's a lot of the drive. The third line down, uh, fifteen hundred which are each. Uh, I don't know what it did there. Uh, on the bottom, the three four hundred is, uh, a hockey expense that will be reimbursed by the Hockey Association. Uh, the thirteen is a yearbook that will fund for selling yearbooks to go back to offset that, so that one will go away. And then seventeen dollars of equipment, uh, if only you could, like, move the book, show that it's a dance floor, that can be back as well. Second page, uh, up on the top, small craters lining, so Carl Perkins, we're still waiting for that money to come in, was ready to go away. Um, in the middle there, under special aid threshold, we've got two thousand, that's a circle there, supplies for our EC Epi, uh, even for some special needs students. Uh, down at the bottom, there's six twenty-eight is an origin, elementary library budget. On the third page, uh, the two eighty-eight is a nurse's office, uh, expense. We had, uh, the audio, audio meter that, uh, went down at the end of the year and we had to replace that, it was not fixable. And then the, uh, the twenty-eight there is a gas cost that charged back, uh, we charge that way back to special needs or gas expense for our banking firms. So that one should disappear as well. Those are the, the red lines is on the per cover. We'll get those cleaned up before the end of this year. Please take care.
Um, and on the other, do you see for Linda, they can't close the furniture or is there a bunch of white case cameras or not?
Uh, I believe that piece of equipment is four hundred and seventy dollars. I mean, they were five hundred.
Five hundred is a big one.
Yeah, so.
That's actually.
Would you look at having her place or?
Yep. No, I didn't, I just can't look fine in work. I can't, I couldn't remember exactly what the number was before it was canceled.
I'll make a post for it when I have those words.
Okay, motion for approval. Second from Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries.
Number seven, obviously approval of Bill. I had the opportunity to come in this afternoon and we do have to show me any new bills. I haven't seen anything on the norm, uh, for this time of the year, so I think my patient should approve it. Uh, bills added, written.
Okay, motion for Mark to approve. Second. Second from Bob. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. And we have two items on the consent agenda and they are for granting tenure to, uh, Jake Pineerman and Tanya Monter.
So.
Motion for Dave to approve. Second. Second from Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number one under business, board chair will respond to public comment from June twelfth, two thousand twelve meeting. Uh, Darrell Larson had requested a copy of the mediated settlement agreement and I think that, that is a public document and, and did you get that from the office? If you all set with that? Okay, and then you also asked that each of us respond as to whether we think we owe Johnson Controls the two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars we paid as a settlement?
Yeah, be, you, did you own that before you agreed on paying mediation?
The response, we, we voted on October eleventh, two thousand eleven to accept that proposal, the settlement proposal. At that time, the statement was read explaining our decision. And that statement, it's in the minutes from the October eleventh board meeting and it is available. And if you'd like to have a copy, you can get that from the district office. I'm not personally going to respond any further, in any further detail than that. I think it's important to move forward and get this behind us. I think the rest of the board feels the same way, but I will open it up if anybody wants to make a comment out.
Have you got the le, you got the letter that we got? The mediation settlement letter?
Uh, the agreement, yes. Yeah, your, your discussion, uh, as to whether, okay, Johnson Controls did not explain to the facility committee, uh, as to, you know, what their charges were. They said they, uh, explained that mediation, so, so nobody's explained that. So I take it that you talked about that in the closed meeting.
There was some, obviously there's items in the closed meeting that we talked about regarding that came out here and voted. Again, the, you know, the decision was made based, that statement that was read, I think, like for the press and it was, it's in the minutes. That explains the decision that we have and I guess we're just, we're going to move forward. We're not going to discuss it for.
I'll respond.
Okay.
Darrell, I, I no longer understand your voters. You were against the project.
No, I wasn't.
Okay. This is our turn to talk.
Okay.
Um, we took a roll call vote, I was the only one that voted against it, but the press reported, you know, the reasons for and the reasons against, and, uh, the vote carried and, uh, it's over. We're moving on.
Okay, that was some major use of school funds and now you're trying to go to the committee and ask for more money?
It's done, it's done.
Okay, we're going to move on to number two under business. We're going to consider approval of, what was it, twelve thirteen school year revenue establishment.
That is exhibit eight of your pack that, uh, does not change from, from the previous meeting, uh, we did meet today to the administrative group, but I did recommend that, uh, start looking at budget production a lot to, once again, uh, you know, two hundred and forty thousand issued. It is much better than the one that you approved last year. Full debt is a budget of three twelve, general funds two hundred, and our capital is one quarter definitely does a lot of doing quite well, but, uh, you can see your fund balance estimated going to be just below on three hundred pounds, so, uh, we'll see what happens once budget gets revised in December again. We'll have to, maybe we'll get budget projections for the following year, you know, unless state comes through and we just buy and buy or something, but, uh, we'll see that happen anyway.
I know it's a moving target, but we have any idea on the goal? Yeah, kindergarten round up and stuff?
Um, I believe kindergarten was about seventy-five. Yeah, this year they were at seventy-eight, so there'll be a couple of intentions, I'm sure. I do not see a huge decrease in years or more.
And for the year end, what do you, are you anticipating where we're at right now, basically?
Um, well, we approved it at our last meeting, I think, at that part of the fever, I think we were, uh, two, six, full debt is spending about two hundred and that course that sports case there, you know, we expended a team to come in, one hundred.
And how does that relate to the, uh?
Well, our estimated fund balance for this year is the four seventy-seven.
That's in comp, that's in?
That's supposed to be the budget number. Yeah. Yep.
That's if we expend that two hundred.
Mm-hmm. So it could be better than that.
Right.
Okay, which will also make next year's better too.
Okay. Not that there is any motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Second from Deb. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number three, we're going to consider authorizing superintendent to obtain a budget for area bakery products for the two thousand twelve thirteen school year. Will bits be authorized seven, two thousand twelve to me?
This is something that we do need to learn that, uh, our bits are bakery, bakery theory bits.
So moved. Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second from Mark. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number one under personnel, we're going to consider approval of Mary Diane Becker to teach the English boot camp in August.
Um, Lori's recommending a boot camp for English for those kids that are not proficient on their CAs since our third or fourth year of doing this. The results have been, uh, very beneficial for our kids and since she has certified, we, uh, we give her target services dollars for that and, uh, basically a budget neutral on that, so I recommend that they go ahead and do that.
Motion from Mark.
Okay.
Second from Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number two, we're going to consider approval of Sherri Nelson to teach the math boot camp in August.
Um, this is the same thing as English boot camp. Sherri did this, uh, three years ago for us. We posted that position, we did not have any certified teachers applying for that position. Uh, she's willing to do that, the only downside of that is since she's not certified, we don't have the target services, so it's going to cost the general fund about seven hundred dollars. Or I think that cost is, I'll wait, but the games, the students make on their test. So I recommend go ahead and do that as well.
So moved. Motion by Deb.
Second.
Second by David. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number three, we're going to consider approval of adding one hour a week to Jennifer Marosik's assignment as community education program coordinator effective July one, two thousand twelve.
Jennifer has been with us for about three years now and, uh, when we first started this program, it was that nineteen hours, we managed to move her to twenty hours, which qualified her, her benefits, uh, sick leave and some vacation, it's all appropriated, but, uh, that position hasn't evolved since he first started. When he first started, he was more of a secretary of, now he's doing a lot more of that program than, uh, he's probably just sort of, I recommend go ahead and do that as well.
So. Motion by Bob. Second, you can say it with Deb. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number four, we're going to consider approval of elementary grant to title paraprofessional training program.
David has driven a, uh, elementary grant for the paraprofessionals to work on, to train them on tier one and tier two interventions and, uh, also working on some iPad training with those, um, fourteen paraprofessionals, about five hours each for the entire year, which is going to cost them approximately about a hundred dollars, that'll come out as a grant.
So moved. Motion from Deb.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number five, we're going to consider approval of elementary grant entitled teach mentor program.
Teacher mentor. Just the, uh, I sort of, I've got to correct it on the, um, good one here. Um, given through the grant, uh, they look like a teacher mentor for three teachers at the elementary, you know, you pay despite of a hundred fifty dollars for the year, you have all three teachers.
Motion from Deb.
Second.
Second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number six, we're going to consider approval of moving Diane Forte, the high school teacher from point six six FTEs two one point oh, FTEs effective twelve thirteen school year.
As you know, um, Cora Consta had resigned and, uh, visiting the board, she felt that she could fill this position with him and save different money, so she put together a fifteen year package, kind of an outline of what she's wanting to do there. Uh, her part of that is moving Diane Forte from point six six to one point.
But this motion is only for Diane.
Yes.
And not exhibit B.
No, it's for Diane. Yep. In visiting the board. In order to not be here tonight, she's interviewing for the chief of, or she's not interviewing for that, so she's not for me, as an interview with her chief.
So moved. Motion by Dave.
Second.
Second from Lou. Is there further discussion on that? Um, hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Okay, number seven, we're going to consider approval of adding two hours per day to Mary Dressinger's assignment effective twelve thirteen school year.
Okay, Mary is a paraprofessional out here to be helping with supervision, she's out here and increasing some, uh, coverage for the special needs, she's every graduate that's with California, we moved back here to consort to protect her, like her professional position. This is another piece of replacing for.
Uh, motion by Bob.
Second.
Second Deb. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. And number eight, we're going to consider approval of Dennis Doncaster, ECSE summer family, plus three point five hours per day effective July ninth through nineteenth, two thousand twelve.
Um, Karen Law will be doing the, uh, ECSE summer program, it's four days a week, so it's eight days, uh, and then it is like, uh, the family's kids, uh, in real.
So moved. Motion by Deb. Second from Lou.
Yeah, I'm a little stereo.
Second by Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number nine, we're going to consider approval of resignation of Todd Standen, cross-country coach effective immediately.
Uh, Max Bartlett didn't meet today, uh, Matt, or Todd stopped in talking this morning and, uh, his, kids are getting more, they're older, more in kidneys and, uh, he wants to be a part of that. Um, we did hire a, uh, elementary teacher who's got a strong background across country and track, we did hire, uh, Jeff Swatsky, and I believe Kristen will be, is also interested in that, so we'll go ahead and post that, but Todd wants that.
So moved. Motion from Mark.
Okay.
Second from Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number ten, we're going to consider approval of hiring Tim Roper, head wrestling coach effective for twelve thirteen wrestling season.
As you recall, uh, Tim resigned, uh, earlier this year and, uh, Max had opened it up, uh, his brother-in-law applied for the position, so he removed himself from that and David Orley, uh, ran the interviews, uh, and three applicants interviewed three and Daniel selected as the head.
They had a normal two day.
Yes, yeah, there was a head coach there, yeah.
So moved. Motion from Bob.
Second.
Second from Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. Number eleven, we're going to consider approval of Arlene Wally, paraprofessional, five and a half hours a day effective twelve thirteen school.
Um, and you recall, um, Terry Davidson resigned her position as a paraprofessional at elementary, she was taking the reading four hundred and right, so she was working in that, which opened up this position. We did, like, all applicants and, uh, reading four five, Arlene was the out-handled, David recommends for approval.
So moved. Motion from Mark.
Second.
Second from Lou. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all of the favors signed by the same side.
Aye.
Full same sign. Motion carries. And we've just got one informational report, so I had to.
Uh, we, Dave went through the board agenda, we had, uh, refund rates from Madely, uh, basically the same ones she does every year, just through the whole papers, so it's very cool. Uh, Donnie gave us an update on all our summer projects, um, DVD, kids and health careers, Lori's going to get that to Brad Swoonland, teaches the health careers class up here. Uh, the civil rights staff election is due in January, Lori and David are working on that. And we have screening reports, ECSE, CFP, forward reports on July fifteen, and also the discipline reports on the fifteen. Uh, the next board meeting is July seventeen, right back here. That's all I got.
That's the only one in July, right?
Hmm, yes, we just do one on July.
Okay, uh, anything else? We had talked during the last meeting about, uh, some sort of kickoff meeting for, we wanted to, yeah, we want to further that discussion now, like, what we thought about?
Yeah, I don't know, we're probably.
We're writing, uh, trouble with the board, uh, the board being involved too much in kickoff, or the appearance that we are, um, those have some, Gretchen's pretty much been batting out and back and forth. Um, I did get the list tonight, I'm not sure. Um, I have not spoken to the quality people myself, but it sounds like the less involvement, as board members, we can just go to meetings and give factual information, they're really not supposed to or allowed to spend any money, which where they also include our time.
My understanding of the board's role in this, we got a bit of an opinion from attorney on that, was that we can't spend any school funds in fact, for the referendum. On our own time, we can go out and promote it as much as we'd like to, we've got our own money and our own resources doing that, and we can hold informational reports, our informational meetings, uh, essentially kind of giving depth to the public as to the financial commission, which we've done in the past, uh, of the school, the impact of the levy, you know, things to that effect. I think that, uh, you know.
But that has to be done as individual, as I said.
Not that, that, I mean, the, the informational meetings, that, that's fine, that can be done as part of a board. Anything promotional, like a bold yes, we can't pay for bold yes signs, everything, that has to come from a community group, or something like key quality or some, something not attached to the school funds. So, that's my understanding of how that works and, you know, maybe we do need to talk about it, holding the information, we have a whole.
Well, like I said, I just got the list tonight and so I would, um, not sure where to start with. But I would try to get ahold of her and, yes, quite a few people, if nothing else, start there.
Yep.
So then we could have just the?
Information.
Yes, we could.
Okay.
And I would, you know, it's kind of, this time of transition, I, I think that we need to coordinate with Mr. US right after, you know, you know, it's, it's, you know, you guys, you need to start that effort a little bit. But we can, we can do that and, yeah, we should, I think we need to, try to disseminate the most information that we can.
Right, right.
That's why I'm going to go ahead and contact you.
Now, do we have, uh, the other, that on that website, Donald?
Uh, yeah, by middle of July.
Oh, middle of July, okay.
And they will be, they would be willing to come out and help with informational meetings, one of the dates that, that Jody would come out.
I don't know if anybody's looked at, you know, Lockton School District's website, but they, when they went there up front, too, they've got that piece that I don't want to put on there, and it's very nice, I mean, you can sit there, you know, it's got you some what if scenarios, I mean, to try to get specific to your case and it's got the information, like, like Jody indicated, if there's something really unique about your situation, all you gotta do is call them, they'll, they'll run the numbers for you. But if you just take a look at even though I watch their website, I don't know if you've seen it.
Go ahead.
It's, it, they've got a separate, like, tab for it, it's, it's good information.
That's what's asking, we're going to have that up and available.
And that's exactly what we need to get that up there soon.
Okay, that's on the plan now, and I'm just going to keep looking at that.
Oh, like, I think that they have to come from the community or the grassroots efforts, um, to, to really get, get the word out, if they want to push the yes bullet, and, and I think, um, as school board members, I mean, the, I think the public should be aware that, yeah, we're in support of, of, of the referendum, um, and passing it, and, uh, we're restricted somewhat by, by statutory limitations as to what we can do and how deeply we can get involved with it, so, um, we just need kind of other sector to pick up the ball and run with it.
Yes, are you guys locked into seven twenty-three or whatever you've been talking about? I mean, is that been stolen? And if not, and if not, when does it have to be for it to be on the ballot?
Sorry.
There was a motion.
Yeah, we approved.
Oh, yeah, I mean, there's been a lot of motions, you can change things. I guess this question is because I don't think you know what kind of funding we're going to be getting next year yet.
And that's the beauty of it, we never find out.
We never do.
That's the whole problem about it, Dick, if you knew, you could wait till the last minute of the ballot, say the week before, you know, we could lower the rate, you can't. There's statutory timelines, that you've got to give the information to Department of Education, whatever, and then you can't change it after that.
What is that deadline then?
I'm not sure what that is, but it's the, the deadline by which the, the certified amount that we're going for has to give.
It's like July, we have to put out in July.
Trying to think of what the exact date is.
It's like, whenever the date is, you gotta go back and have him post that.
Right.
See, I think some of you know what I'm getting at, I've mentioned to you the additional funding and you don't seem to acknowledge it and want to believe it. I got the numbers in November from a legislative aide.
Which, is that what you talked to me about after this, oh, so, that, that's not signed into law, that's not going to happen.
It's a proposal.
It's not going to happen, well, legislature doesn't meet again until January.
But it's not going to happen. I, I've discussed this with other administrators in different schools, Dick, and it's not going to happen.
I read, read, if you read the West Central Tribune article today about NLS's budget for next year, you've got one of the figures in there, one of the figures you're talking about, so. I mean, you don't have to acknowledge it, but I don't want to see you out there asking people for money when you can't justify what it's for. That's the big, that's the big scare.
We went through that process and we came up, you know, with that, three months ago, where we approved that number.
Because even, because even that seven hundred and twenty-three is still not going to get us very far. I mean, by all the analysis that we've had, projected out.
Good, but you referred to, Dick, because that was like a hundred and eighty-eight bucks or whatever, once per pupil. I mean, that, that was thrown out there a long time ago.
That's right.
That number was thrown out a long time, at the beginning of the session, whatever, and it was, it's never formally been acted upon, and it's never been signed into law or approved anywhere.
Well, it's on all the Minnesota Department of Ed sites. You know, those numbers are in every school district's numbers, when you look at them for this next, this little year.
They're adding it in.
Yes.
As they're going to get it from the state.
There you go. There you go.
That's.
See, I understand.
That's not how I understand it, I have to put talk to people.
Well, I talked to Michelle Fishbox's aide and I talked to Kyle West's legislative aide and that's where the numbers come from.
West's aide.
But I can, I can see where you'd be perplexed every year to try to come up with a budget when you don't know what you're getting, but in order to find out what you're getting, you have to inquire, you're going to have to inquire, you're going to have to do some digging, because if, by the time it comes to you, it may be very late, maybe very, very late in the game.
Well, there's a lot of variables in school budget and you can't exactly what you're getting, the expenditures and revenues, the people, there's a huge number of variables and that partially explains why our preliminary budget and our end budget, the final audit is so far apart. So, I, I think we don't have an exact number of that, we came up with the best number that So, I, I think we don't have an exact number of that, we came up with the best number that we thought we could get to get the, you know, the public to support it, help us out, and that's the number we chose with, that's the number we're going to go with, so, ah, you know, we're just the next two.
And we could, and we could probably go back and, and, and research that a little bit more, I guess, I, I'd be curious, because I have not heard that yet either, that we had gotten any money.
And the other curious thing about the legislature is when they add money somewhere, when it comes out like everybody's getting it, they had the nasty habit of, while everybody's getting it up front, somebody's getting it taken out of their back pocket, they did that with transportation, they did that with, um, special ed, they'll do, it's the, take it out of this pot and put it into that pot. I would definitely, you know, look into it or will, because I, to be honest with you, I have not heard that, I'm like them, that it was not written into law.
I looked into it for the last seven months, so, so that's why I thought I'd bring it to you guys, and.
But you looked into the money coming, what I wanted to look into is where is it coming out of, because they didn't come up with an extra hundred and eighty dollars per pupil unit somewhere, it had to come from somewhere, so I want to make sure it's not leaving this district out the back door, sure I counted in.
And that's very responsible, that's very responsible to do on anybody's part that cares to, but when the only feedback I get is, oh, no, that, no, that doesn't exist. People don't take time, people don't take.
It was a budget forecast.
People don't take time to put the, the numbers out there for how many districts in Minnesota, just to blow smoke at you, I don't believe.
That money's not going on the general head formula, I mean, there hasn't been a change in that, the last change we got was fifty-five dollars, I think, two years ago.
Where's this money, if you did, where's this money going on the formula? I mean, where are they putting it in that?
There's three different areas where it mainly is.
And that is?
Bruce?
I don't recall, I don't recall.
Because seriously, it's, there are many areas where it's going somewhere, it's, it's got to come from somewhere, and I want to find that before I.
Well, like I said, anybody who's got any interest, I'm willing to share it with you, but, but when I get the feedback I do, it's like, what's the point? What is the point?
On another issue that's unknown, unrelated, I talked to Donnie already, I think it's time for those vehicle barriers at the Army Reserve to go?
I'll agree. Can we use, utilize them elsewhere?
Well, Boss Fleming would like some.
Yeah.
And actually, we're talking to Max and Matt, they would like probably six of them, to build a barrier and dunk their agro line in the middle.
Okay.
You know, all that.
Yep, yep, yep.
There was talk about putting them in parking lots, but I don't see that happening, because, for one thing, you've got to mark them, you fluorescent, flag them.
They're.
And once you get a snowstorm in there, nobody's going to see them, they're going to run into them.
No, how about that little cross there, that little makeshift road?
Well, they're talking about putting a curb in there.
Who's talking about it?
We, ah, we should say at the administrative meeting, we had talked about putting the curb back in, instead of having a.
Okay.
You know, then at least they have to, you know.
But you could, you could probably put one in there somewhere too.
About two by four of males.
I think, what would be, you'd turn the doors before school?
Yeah, I mean, if, we'll have to talk at the next meeting, but I, for my part, yeah, take them up.
Worst case scenario, we'll break them up?
Oh, I, I, people want them, so.
But if we can use them for our, use two for, like you said, a bag behind the elevator somewhere, you can put some of that stuff, that would be kind of nice to have.
That would be nice for that.
But don't put them on parking lot, don't, you know.
That's a good for unit, you know, for driving.
So, yeah.
Okay, um, it had been suggested, I can't remember who, that, we've got a superintendent coming in, and on that note, um, this is Todd's final meeting, so I would like to thank him publicly for his years of service, and wish you well in the future.
Thank you.
Um, but it had been suggested that we hold reception for Mr. Hewitt possibly, and I don't know if that's something that we're, was discussed, now, possibly for next board meeting, or, you know, that's July seventeenth, maybe an hour before or something.
Should have.
I don't know if that's, makes sense to do something like that, or, can I have a little reception here?
Yep.
Okay, we kind of find out that, get that together, so, you know, it'll be the seventeenth of July, and.
We'll have them either start.
Meeting will be at eight, at a certain time, and we'll just have kind of a whole reception for people that would like to come to meet Mr. Hewitt.
Seven to eight, or six thirty to eight?
What do you think?
Take an hour drop?
Six thirty to eight, you say six thirty?
Take an hour and a half before the meeting.
Whoever wants to come in, from the public.
So we're planning on, ah, the seventeenth and the seventeenth. Anything else? Not many concerns.